Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. This is Council President Tony Troutner. This is a remote meeting due to the COVID-19 coronavirus emergency. We are broadcasting live this afternoon on Kent TV 21. You can find us on the City of Kent Facebook site, the Kent TV 21 channel, and also have the ability to call into this meeting. So, thank you very much to anyone that is joining us. We will go ahead and get started. We have two items on the agenda today, and the first one is a storm system update. So I'd like to welcome Jens Vincent and Mike McTudis to get us started. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. This is Mike. Go ahead, Jen.
Thank you for having us tonight. This is Jens Vincent. I'm your Sewer and Storm Drainage Manager.
And this is Mike McTudis, and I am the city's Environmental Engineering Manager. So, on the next slide, we'll show you a very quick outline of what we're going to be talking about. Jens will be going through the Public Works Storm operations for this year, and then I will be covering the major storm capital projects for this year and going into next year, as well as talking, giving an update on the Green River High Flows from February and how we're responding to that. So, why don't you go ahead, Jen?
Oh, fantastic. Well, good evening, everyone. Every year, I like to take the opportunity to just talk to you and talk about the things that we've been able to accomplish during the year. And this year especially being that things have been just a little bit strange beginning this March. We were splitting shifts. We went 50/50. Fifty people or 50% of our crew was at home, 50% of our crew was at work. And this is an opportunity for me to share with you just the amount of work that we were able to accomplish so far in 2020. So, right now with this slide, year-to-date, we've been able to, we've been able to ditch, we've been able to excavate about 4,060 linear feet of ditch line. So, when we're out there cleaning ditch, when we clean the bottom of the ditch, there's times where we often have to come up and where you can see there, we'll come up and we'll scrape the shoulder of the ditch. It kind of looks, it doesn't necessarily look all that good, but we do that so we can ensure that the water is going to flow from the road into the ditch. And we just, that way we get the water off the road. And then the last thing you'll see, if you go all, look at the slide on the right, you'll see where there's some riprap, some fractured rock there. The last thing we do there is we'll armor the culvert ends to dress it up and to stop any erosion that's coming off the driveway or off the road. Now, when there are oftentimes when we're out there, when we're out there ditching, that we won't, we won't remove all of the vegetation and debris. You'll see in the slide to the right there that we only ditched part of it. We left it checked down there, but the rest of the vegetation there actually acts as a filter of sorts. And what that does is just catches the debris and the sedimentation from the newly excavated exposed soils. This one was questionable to me. This little easement, actually, this is a drainage easement that we had gotten a call on. This came in as a service request. Now, mind you, a lot of the, a lot of the things that we do is very reactive. A majority of the work that we, that we get and tackle throughout the year come in as service requests during our heavy winter months. And this is one of those calls that we got. This is a drainage easement between two private homes. And we verified that this is our responsibility. Our supervisors worked with Cheryl Rolsex and Dee Martindale to determine that we do in fact have responsibility here. And you can see where our storm crew went in there and removed the heavy sedimentation and removed the heavy vegetation that had overgrown and impacted the drainage, and then went in there and rehabilitated it with with more fractured rock riprap. And what that does is it slows down, diffuses the energy of the water and slows down or eliminates erosion completely. Thank you. Next, please. I also got a call from, from an elderly lady who lives up off of 132nd. And she had to cross 132nd to check her mail, and she was struggling with that. And then shortly after she called me, I got a call from the post office. And to back up, the elderly lady's claim that they were struggling to deliver her mail. And so what we had done, we went up there and we extended a culvert in the driveway there so that we could relocate. We didn't relocate the mailbox, but the lady's family did, relocated the mailbox so that she could safely retrieve her mail without crossing 132nd. So, this is the crew just doing that project for her, just to make things safer for. Slide, please. The city does have a few areas where our drainage ties into another jurisdictions drainage area. This is an example down off of 84th and 212th where our system flows into Drainage District Number One's drainage channel. And it's slightly impacted. We're currently working with the Drainage District to get their system improved so that our system will flow properly. This is something that we discovered after a service call, and we tried to go in and do an inventory of our system out on 84th and couldn't see it because our system was completely full of water. But we've, like I said, we've since made contact with the Drainage District, and this is on, in, on their list of items to handle. Thank you. Again, like I said, mentioned earlier, a lot of the work that we get is come in during the winter. We get a lot of calls for berms. We have water that flows off of the right-of-way, flows into private property, either because they live at the bottom of a cul-de-sac, let's say, and sometimes the water will flow off the top of a driveway, down into a driveway, or they just live in an unfortunate area where the water flows off. And every year, we install hundreds of feet of berms. And sometimes we have the, sometimes we're able to use a berm machine that you guys were, were afforded us to purchase a few years ago. And in areas like this, a berm machine didn't work, and they had to lay out quite a few feet of berm by hand. Next slide, please. There are a few areas, this is in the Lower East Hill area, where we've been maintaining berms for years. That's just one of the things that has to be done. You know, once we put them in, they get driven over, they get driven across, and we'll have to go in, we'll remove them and build them back up, just so that we can maintain the private properties there and keep erosion from continuing any further. Thank you. I had gotten a call from Bill Thomas, our street manager, and he talked to me about a puddle that had just been, been bugging, been bugging them for the street department for years down here on Sixth and Smith. And this is at the, it looks like the south entrance to the RJC down here, Regional Justice Center. And so what we did is, we went down there, we installed a catch basin, and about 125 feet of storm line to pick up that puddle that's continually building up there. And then we smoothed it out, we cleaned up all that gravel and kind of built a little swell there. It's tough to see in the picture, but we'll see this winter, but I'm pretty sure that what we've done there should take care of the continual flooding that's been going on there evidently for quite some time. But we were happy to get in there and help them out with the situation. Next, please. This was another service we cast. We get a lot of them, we get a lot of them, and the guys do a fantastic job of responding to them. We discovered that this pipe was broken, and improvements were needed. So the crews went in, did a great job of working in, actually in a really tight area, in a, in a little neighborhood up above Lake Meridian. There was a lot of traffic through here. And the garbage truck barely fit through here. It was just a really unfortunate time, really, when we started it. But the residents were really happy. They worked really well with our guys. And the project turned out really good. Thank you. During regular maintenance, the crews were out cleaning, just doing regular line cleaning, and they'd found where a pipe had been separated. And they'd later, came back at a later date, excavated down, separated, opened up the pipe. And what they did here is they wrapped the pipe, they fixed the joint, they brought the pipe together, and then they wrapped it with what's called shrink wrap. And what they do there is they wrap it, they heat it up, it shrinks down, and it hardens up and creates a watertight seal. And, and then they backfill and basically just plugs the hole. It creates, creates a nice tight seal and plugs the hole, so there's no more infiltration or exfiltration. Next, please. This is another example of that start to finish. We have Steve McDonald there over to the left, doing the excavation with his Vector truck. Sometimes that's necessary, depending on the utilities that are in the way, or maybe they're in a tight workplace. And then Josh Billyu in the, in the middle, prepping the spot for, again, they're using shrink wrap to, to, to plug up the joint there to wrap that joint and tighten it up. And then at the end there, you can see where he's just finishing it with asphalt. The goal is always to leave the job site better than how we left it. And the guys did a fantastic job there. Thank you. Next, please. Oftentimes, the guys will get called for erosion on the outlets to a pond. I'm not exactly, I see the address there. I'm not familiar with the pond. But anyhow, this is from years of just, just flowing out of the pond. And instead of battling the water, our answer to that more often than not is just to clean up and backfill with riprap and allow the water to flow in the path that it's chosen, as long as it's not damaging private property. And it's not gonna, it's not damaging public property. And we'll backfill with the riprap there, like I said, and it stops the erosion and stops the continual scouring and erosion downstream. Thank you. So, to date, the Drainage Group has repaired 43 catch basins, and sometimes it's necessary to remove and replace the curbing gutter behind it completely as part of the repair. Pictured is Alex Sheets, actually, and this is, this is him actually performing his first curbing gutter replacement since he transferred over to the Drainage Department. He was pretty excited to be out there on that project. Next, please. Again, the guys have been working so hard. So far this year, the Drainage Team has cleaned 28 storm ponds. During the inspection process, the vegetation staff identifies which ponds need maintenance and what needs to be done. Then the Drainage Team takes that info and works it into their work plan. Thank you. You, I think you've seen a theme here in a lot of our pictures. You'll see we use a lot of riprap and fractured rock. And again, we do that to armor our culvert ends, our outfalls, and it's a way of stopping erosion. And what it does, it also protects this plastic pipe, which we no longer allow as an outfall or culvert into our ponds, but it protects it from the mowing and maintenance of process. Another prime example of just armoring continual erosion process with riprap. So, every year, we do, we have a big program, but every year we, we remove sediment and debris from Earthworks Pond as part of a citywide project. There are four other locations we work within. We have a permit that we apply for, and it's a five-year permit. We got a new permit this year. This year, in Earthworks Pond alone, we removed approximately 450 cubic yards of sediment and debris. That pond, I figure was working, it was, was it about 50% capacity? That's about the worst I've ever seen it. In about 25 years of doing that project alone, it was, it was pretty amazing. Next, please. Now, with, with this project, I want to make sure I give credit where credit do this, where credits do this. This project was not done by the Storm Department. It was in fact done by the Sewer Department, and I'll have a chance to brag about them at a later date, but they did a beautiful job here. This is at the inlet to the U.P. Pump Station. The embankments on both sides of the inlet had started sloughing in February after, after that amazing rain that we had. And what they'd done is they went in there and they removed the sloughing material. They put down ecology blocks. They covered the newly exposed soil with fabric, and then they came back over that fabric with Corius balls to armor it up and to ensure that we'll make it through this, the winter season or the winter seasons to come, depending on how long that pump station stays in, in, in action. Next, please. As part of, another part of drainage maintenance is TVing existing storm systems. To date, our TV crew has TV'd over 3,500 linear feet of pipe. In October, that team will switch over to TVing existing sewer. We, what, what they typically do, the schedule is six-month storm, six-month sewer. So, all right, so what we're going to do now is we'll take all that information that they've gathered from TVing all the, all the storm pipe, and we'll see what work, if any, needs to be moved over to next year's work plan. But I think it's important to note, for all you moms and dads that are watching, or if, depending on how many are watching, that Kyle is not playing his Xbox, but years of playing video games may have just paid off in his profession. He's doing a fantastic job operating that TV truck with an Xbox controller. He's doing a great job for us. Next, please. We're getting in toward the end of my portion of this presentation, and this is going to actually work well as we move into Mike's. He's going to touch on this a little bit. In February of last year, we got a call from WENCO. Their parking lot was underwater. This is at Garrison Creek and 212th, as the, as the caption says. Their parking lot, lower parking lot, the entrance to WENCO there was underwater. We discovered that the culvert that conveys Garrison Creek under 212th was completely plugged. That's a picture of my crew there, and they're working on the south side of 212th down in the ravine, looking for, I mean, it should, it looks like it should be obvious, but they're looking for the culvert end where that water is coming out. Next slide, please. What ended up happening is we got through the winter, and we waited until July, when the water was at its lowest. And they spent all of July and part of August trying to locate the buried culvert end where those guys were in that previous slide. The top of the culvert, when they act, when they ended up finding it, was buried about two and a half feet under the debris that they were standing on. And it's another 45 inches to the bottom of that pipe where you see there in the, in the right picture. That picture, the pipe is completely full of debris from, from, from that picture up to about, I'd say about 180 feet up. It wasn't completely full from 180 feet to the inlet. That part was wide open, oddly enough, but it was quite the project. And the guys worked, the guys worked extremely hard to get that pipe open. And, 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 and we'll move on to the next slide, and I'll show you, show you what some of the end result is. So, when you saw that slide three, three back, and you saw those guys standing there, the slide to the left is, is, is where they were standing. And you can see there's a giant glory hole. There's quite a bit of material that excavator is sitting. So, what had happened is because we're working in Garrison Creek, it requires an HPA permit. And we've developed a great relationship with our representative from Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife, and our engineering department worked with them, and we were able to, to acquire an emergency permit, which allowed us to get in there and do this work. I was able to meet Mr. Fisher, who's our Larry Fisher, who's our representative out on site, and he allowed me to do a little bit more work than our, than our permit allowed. So, I was able to dig a plunge pool, which is, which is a pool, which will catch some of the remaining material that's going to come through that pipe this, this winter. And that's where we've spent a lot of our, a lot of our energy. Like I said, most of, almost all of July and into August, and right now, we're, we're catching up on some things. We're tying up some loose ends, and we're really starting to ramp up and get into our winter prep season. And so that's where I leave off, is as we move into Mike's presentation. I just wanted to take this opportunity to, 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 to just really brag up and, and just mention how proud I am of the Drainage Crew and the Sewer Crew and how they pulled together during these unprecedented times, how they worked through their 50% on and 50% off split shifts, and really produced a lot of work this year. With that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thanks, Jens. And I will be following up on talking about the Garrison Creek and 212th later in my presentation also. Whoops, it looks like the presentation went down. There we go. Okay, so I am going to be talking about quite a few projects, and then the Green River flows. I'll be going through them pretty rapidly. This is, starting with projects under construction, we have the Earthworks Park Dam, I'm sorry, not Earthworks Park, Upper Mill Creek Dam. This is up at 104th, and you see some, the photos on the left are the, the new dam and overflow, and then some of the bypass that that's under construction. And on the lower right is the diversion structure where it siphons water off from Mill Creek into the, into the reservoir. A next slide, please. These are a couple of new drone photos from, from our own city staff. So, on the, the left photo is the diversion structure. There's still quite a bit of work to do, but we're working to get this operational here by the, by the flood season this year. The photo on the right is the new dam, and you can see the overflow structure, overflow spillway going on to 104th. We're looking at getting 104th reopened by the end of September. A next slide, please. And then that, that project altogether is going to, total cost will be about $10 million. The Green River Natural Resource Area South Pump Station is also under construction. You can see the picture on the right is, there's the diversion structure off of the channel down at the lower left portion of that right photo, which will take water into a culvert into the pump station, which will then send it to a pipe that will go out straight to the Green River. So it'll divert it, intercept it before it gets to the Natural Resource Area and preserve volume in the Natural Resource Area. That project also on schedule to be operational for this winter. Total cost of that project will be about $7 million. A next slide, please. So, this project is the Lower Russell Levy Project that we're partnering with the Flood Control District. You've seen this, this graphic before. And if we could go to the next slide, that'll give, so I can show some updates. So Phase 1 was the flood wall for the southern portion of this project. And you can see the flood wall kind of bending with the river around the lower, the white line around the warehouse there. It kind of borders the river. So, that, that is completed. It's a very nice-looking flood wall. It has native plants and animals on it, and it is done going to Phase 2, which is the next slide, which is now under construction and will be for the next 48 or 24 months. And you can see a lot of excavation going on. So, the existing, existing Bandorance Park is up at the, the upper portion of this picture. North is off to the right. So, that's being excavated out. The new park is being filled, and the new levee is being filled. And the picture on the right shows you can see kind of the gray soil in the middle there. That is the new levee field, fill. That's the key way. Also of note is that in the excavation Uh, also of note is that in the excavation of the, uh, the old Bandorance Park, there has been a, a discovery of a number of, uh, cultural artifacts, uh, which they are still working around and the project is still working fine, but it's very interesting, the things that they are, the Native American, uh, cultural resources that are being, uh, unearthed as, as we move along and preserved. Uh, next slide, please. And, and that project, uh, total cost for Flood Control District funds is about fifty-four million dollars. Uh, this is, uh, we've had two new, uh, USGS, or we're partnering with the USGS, US Geological Survey, uh, to put in river gauges in two new, uh, spots. Uh, one is at the Maker Bridge, uh, and one is at the South Two Seventy Second, uh, Bridge area. Uh, those have been installed. They are live now. They're on the USGS website. Uh, and they are, uh, but they are being calibrated. So the data is, is still, uh, they're working on getting the elevations right and getting the, the flows, the flow ratings built. Uh, but they are live now. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so, uh, Downey Project. Uh, so we are, uh, the lower left pro, uh, photo is active construction. That picture was taken last week. Uh, that was using the grant money from the Flood Control District. Uh, and then we also have other grant funds that we are, uh, larger grant funds that we are in the process of, of applying for. Uh, we have a presentation this Thursday, uh, to the Governor's Financial Office. Uh, we were one of two projects that were invited to present to them as they prepare their budget for this coming year. Uh, we've considered that a, a, a very high praise. We're two of eight projects that are left on the list for the large capacity grants. And we are also waiting for the results of the ratings for the flood planes by design grants, which is supposed to come out in the next two weeks. Uh, so we've got construction going on to move about twenty-five thousand yards of material out of there and install, uh, some woody debris and uh, in the end look like the pictures that we've got on the right. Those are some renderings that we had prepared uh, to try and sell how, how good the project is going to, to perform. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so next I'm going to go through a list of, those were the projects under act, major projects under active construction. Uh, I'm gonna talk through, uh, lists of projects that are, uh, in design. So the next project up is, uh, Signature Point Levy. Uh, that is a partnership, uh, with the Flood Control District. Uh, that will be the lo, longest levy, uh, constructed by, uh, the Flood Control District and in, in the city. Uh, so far since the Flood Control District has been in existence, so the current longest levy will be a Lower Russell at one point four miles, Signature Point will be one point five miles. Uh, both of those projects will bring the, the, uh, river levy protection in those areas up to the five hundred year flow standard. And that, uh, we are working up to thirty percent design, which will be, uh, prepared within the next couple of weeks, which we will then go through reviews with the King County and the Flood Control District and start moving ahead. Uh, later into, uh, permitting and, and, uh, property acquisition that we need to do the, the, um, improved levy. Next slide, please. So, uh, and this is, this is good that these are under construction because we have, uh, like this photo shows. Uh, we had the high water in February. Uh, and I will be talking a little bit about how we're trying to prepare for that for this winter, uh, as I get later in the, in the presentation. Next slide, please. Uh, part of the Signature Point, uh, project is going to be, uh, re relocating our Washington Avenue Pump Station. Uh, the picture on the left is the existing pump station right along, uh, the west side of, uh, Washington Avenue. And it's, it's next to the Valley Apartments along the river and it drains the area of the old uh, Kmart and Safeway up to the north along Washington Avenue. All of that area goes into this pipe and into this a pump station which ran quite a bit on the, during the storm this last February. We are going to be relocating it out of the way of the new levy across Washington to the picture on the right where you can see where the two trees are. Uh, we'll be putting it in that open area, uh, between Holly Road and Washington Avenue. Next slide, please. Uh, Milwaukee two, uh, we are, and you've, you've heard about this quite a bit also. We're partnering with the Flood Control District. Uh, and that will include habitat improvements as well as, um, raising the levy up to the five hundred year standard. And, uh, also, uh, continuing the trail. So we'll have a separated, uh, Green River Trail uh, through this area where now it shares the road with South Two Fifty-Ninth Street. Uh, this project is, uh, uh, there is an interlocal agreement which you saw uh, at the Committee of the Whole and which is going to the, uh, uh, council tonight, uh, which is also going to the Flood Control District Board of Supervisors next week to increase the amount of funding available, uh, so we can purchase, uh, some of the, the parcels uh, immediately adjacent to the levy which are being required to be purchased for the levy construction. And then we will be working with the Flood Control District on another ILA early in two thousand twenty-one, uh, to do full design on that project. Uh, the Green River Natural Resource Area North Pump Station is a, a project that has been long anticipated. And you can see the, the, uh, uh, part, the photo on the bottom, uh, which we have our man-made lagoons at the Natural Resource Area on the right. And we have the, uh, flood storage lagoon on the left. Uh, but we have never been able to fully utilize, uh, all of the volume in that area just because of high groundwater and some of the confined, the high groundwater in the, in the lagoon as well as in the channel, which you can see in the, uh, upper left photo, which is the Boeing Channel along two twelve, which also goes along West Valley Highway. Uh, so the project is going to, uh, pump water, uh, up that channel a little ways and then put in a structure to prevent it from coming back on us. So it will be right at two twelve. It'll pump the water under two twelfth street. Uh, and we'll have a, a, a backflow device, uh, to prevent it from coming back. So during the low flow times, we'll be able to, uh, ex evacuate a lot of the water from the natural resource area and get it to function much better, which will help, uh, flooding along Mill Creek, uh, seventy-six, uh, as well as, uh, uh, a large area of the valley, uh, will, will, this will be a, a benefit for. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, Eighty First Avenue Pump Station. Uh, this is an area where we have an existing pump station. Uh, but it, and, and that pump station works as hard as it can, uh, but it just cannot keep up during the big flow events. Uh, so we are gonna be working on, uh, increasing the size of that pump station, uh, to be able to get the water out of this area along Eighty First, right at South One Ninety-Sixth Street. Next slide, please. Um, and Mill Creek Reestablishment, um, that is a project we've been working on for a number of years, uh, getting to the permitting process. And we've brought some of the permitting documents in front of you uh, when we were meeting in person and it, it was the size of an old phone book. Uh, the documents that we've submitted to the Corps of Engineers. We are making progress on that. Uh, the, the permit is now in the hands of the, uh, uh, Federal Fisheries Services for review. So it's gotten through the Corps of Engineers for, uh, review. It's going to the Federal Fisheries Services and then it will, they will comment on it and send it back to the Corps. And they've told us that will be within about six months. Uh, so that will, and, and the, the map on the left is something we've shown you before, just the, the extensive, uh, uh, sedimentation that's happened in the creek. And so then, uh, Jen's, uh, talked about the volumes of sediment that come out of that pond up in, uh, in the Earthworks Park. That captures the large sediment, uh, but the, the silthier sediment that, that doesn't, uh, drop out very quickly continues downstream. Uh, so that is what we are dealing with, is the larger storm events in the past, which have taken, have pushed a lot of the finer sediment downstream, uh, which we need to get out. And then that project will also include some mitigation measures, uh, to, to prevent that, uh, the finer sediment from coming downstream uh, as much as it does today. Uh, Garrison Creek at two twelve, uh, this is the area Jen's talked about. Uh, as you can see on the, the middle picture, how high the sediment was above that culvert. Uh, it was, it was several feet high. A lot of it was new sediment, uh, because of the two huge storms that we had over this last winter. Uh, but that is cleaned out now. One of the things we saw in that picture on the right, uh, was the pipe, uh, once it was cleaned out, it's coming apart. Uh, it, 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 uh, so it's, it's damaged. The bottom is unraveling, uh, and you have open areas in the pipe. So we are looking at an emergency fix, uh, for that this fall. Uh, that is not something that we want to be, uh, going into the winter with, particularly with, uh, uh, South Two Twelfth Street going right over the top of it. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, the Lake Fenwick Hypolimnetic Irrator, uh, so we have an existing arrator which has been there for about twenty-five years. And you can see the, the aeration device up on the upper right photo. It's a bubbler down at the bottom of the lake, uh, which prevents, which top binds phosphorus to the bottom, which prevents algae blooms. Uh, it has never really been big enough. So we've gotten quite a bit of grant money to replace that with a larger, uh, a larger facility. And you can see on the bottom right, uh, that it's gonna have some, uh, larger bubblers that extend out to the sides uh, to go, uh, across the bottom of the lake rather than just having a single point. Uh, but that does require installation of a, a larger, um, oxygenator. Uh, so that is going out to bid, uh, within a month. Next slide, please. Uh, Green River High Flows. It looks like I've got just a few minutes left. A Green River High Flow. So, uh, as we talked about before, the Green River was at its highest point since the Howard Hansen Dam was built this last February. This, this last February was at the highest since the dam was built in nineteen sixty-two. Uh, so, uh, next slide, please. So we'll be talking, uh, recap. Uh, as I mentioned, flows higher than expected. Uh, the levees were very short. Uh, particular, you can see Washington Avenue in this photo. Uh, we had two other areas where it was particularly short, uh, at Signature Point and at Milwaukee two. Uh, the USGS changed the flow rating at the Auburn Gage. Uh, so there's been a lot of work, uh, uh, checking that out and I'll talk about that in the, in the next slide. And then there was also levy damage because the river came down so quickly, uh, dragged some of the saturated levees down with it. Uh, some of the ones that, the one we're most concerned about is the Desamone Levy in Taquilla. Uh, next slide, please. So we've had quite a few meetings with, uh, King County, uh, with the Corps of Engineers or with the USGS, as well as with the other valley cities through the summer. Uh, King County paid for a consultant to check, uh, river restrictions on, uh, up and downstream from the gauge area where the, the USGS changed the gauge rating because they said it was constricted. Uh, they didn't find anything and you can see an example of some of the cross-sections they looked at between the blue in two thousand and six versus the one that was updated this year. And that's pretty typical, that the river is getting a little bit deeper, uh, but just a little bit narrower in some places. Uh, but nothing that would really cause, uh, much of a change in, in flows. And that's consistent with what we found in Kent also. So we've checked that. We've installed two new river gauges. So we have much better live information. Uh, it'll take points every fifteen minutes, uh, and those will be going on, uh, the USGS website, uh, live. And then, uh, we've also gotten commitments from the Corps of Engineers to improve communications, uh, with the local agencies. Uh, they, they have not committed to, uh, changing the operation of the dam, but they have committed to talking to us, uh, to get feedback from us on how things are going uh, during storm events before they make changes to them. Next slide, please. So, uh, as I mentioned, the way we've looked for constrictions have, have not found those. Uh, so we are gonna be requesting the USGS to, to do a double check, a thorough check of their rating, uh, to make sure that what they found during the February storm was not just some transitory uh, sediment that came through because it, it certainly was not seen during the summertime. Uh, and as I mentioned, the issue remaining, the, the Howard Hansen Dam still is authorized to go up to twelve thousand cubic feet per second. Uh, so if, with the current rating on the Auburn Gage, which is what they use, uh, to dictate how much water they can release, uh, uh, twelve thousand CFS, uh, does not really work for us. Uh, and then we also have the weakened levy at Desamone, uh, which the Flood Control District is preparing to, uh, uh, do some very careful watching and, uh, we are pushing them to, uh, stockpile materials in case the, uh, the levy, uh, uh, shows increased signs of weakness. Next slide, please. Uh, so one of the other things we are going to do is we are going to, uh, request some HESCOs which are, uh, kind of, um, uh, gabion baskets that, that have, uh, that you put sand in. Uh, they were originally designed for the military, uh, to protect against, in, in war to, they stop bullets. Uh, but they also stop floodwater. Uh, so, uh, we are gonna be proc- procuring some of those from the Corps of Engineers. They said they would provide them to us for free. Uh, we will have to provide the materials to fill those, uh, and install them. Uh, but we are gonna be prepared for that. And I've got the photos of the, the Valley Apartments uh, next to Washington Avenue right at, uh, Signature, the Signature Point Levy. And you can see how high the water was up against that uh, levy, uh, during the February event. And then the top photo is, uh, the giant sandbags that we had there uh, just over ten years ago. Uh, and so it would be that we would not be putting these facilities in, uh, like we did for miles in, uh, after the two thousand and nine event. Uh, we would be putting them in for a, a much shorter span. Uh, I believe about nineteen hundred feet between the two locations is what we're, we're looking at. Uh, and as I mentioned, increased regional coordination and communication, uh, for the coming flood season. The Corps of Engineers has scheduled their, uh, flood prep meeting that they have once a year. That's coming up in October. Uh, we're gonna be preparing for our flood patrols. Uh, we'll, we'll be ready with that. And then we're gonna request the USGS do a reevaluation of their rating curve uh, to see whether, uh, they, uh, uh, whether they can change that, whether the, the conditions have changed. And that is the end of my presentation and, uh, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you. Two great presentations. Obviously a lot going on around the city. Any questions or comments for either Jen's or Mike on both of these slides? Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a comment. You know, it is amazing how much work, uh, this team does. And sometimes we live in the city and we'd assume things just happen, you know, but just looking behind the scene, I just think this team, uh, uh, has continued to do a credible, incredible job around our stormwater system to make sure that we are safe in the flooding. So I just wanna say kudos to the team. A lot of people just don't notice this. Like I said, it's a soon thing just happened, but a lot of work behind the scene and, uh, Kim, Mike, and then, and this just awesome job. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that.
I'll echo that as well, Councilmember Boyce. And I know, you know, you guys talked about the, how you had the fifty fifty crews, um, earlier this spring when we, um, were dealing with the start of COVID. And I think there was a lot of thought that went into that to keep our crews safe, but also making sure we were continuing to do all of this work around the city. So, great job. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you. With the Westfin, with the Lake Fenwick Project, supposing that bids go as ev- everything goes on time, when do you expect the actual construction to start on that, on the bubbler?
Well, there, there is some construction that would be starting, uh, this fall. Uh, un- unlike the, the stream systems, uh, the time that we're allowed to do in-water work on Lake Fenwick is during the winter. Uh, so during, on rivers and streams where, where you have fish, uh, they want us to do the work during the summertime. Uh, but for Lake Fenwick, they want us to do it during the winter. So it would go, it would be starting in the fall and go over the winter uh, with the goal of being finished, uh, around April, uh, to have the, the new bubbler and the new oxygenator all installed.
Great. Great presentations, both of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other hands raised, comments or questions? All right. I am not seeing any. Thank you again. Great information. And it looks like our agenda, we are right on schedule. So I am going to welcome Haley Bond Steel next to talk about the South King Housing Collaborative Housing Action Plan Framework. Welcome, Haley.
Hi there. Thank you, everyone. I am going to share my screen. Kim has graciously agreed to relinquish control for a moment. So if you could confirm that you can see the title slide for the South King Housing Framework, we can get going. Are you good?
Yes.
Great.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, okay. So thanks for having me. I'm Haley Bond Steel, Long Range Planning Manager with the city. And I know you all are familiar with this project because I've been talking to you about it for about a year now. We applied for this grant to the Department of Commerce last, uh, fall. And we received word that we were, uh, funded sort of last winter. And as you know, we formed a hasty, but powerful and mighty collaborative with five of our neighboring cities to fulfill some of the grant requirements. Now, the grant was about increasing residential building capacity, but a lot of the grant requirements really were about data collection and, um, policy analysis that we felt would But a lot of the grant requirements really were about data collection and policy analysis that we felt would be better done at the subregional level. To really get a sense for, you know, how the subregional housing market functions as a unit instead of looking at our individual borders. So you're going to see a huge amount of information this in this presentation. It will represent a really significant need that's both broad and deep. It's across the board and you know, the city is not necessarily as equipped as any of us would like to be able to address everything. But I will try to be as specific as I can about what we can do, mostly from a land use perspective, of course, since that's my expertise. I'm also going to follow up with a slew of documents that contain even more information that are really the results of this collaborative. And I encourage you to, you know, if you can at least scan through them, there's a ton in there, a lot of good tidbits. But with so much information, there are a lot of little mysteries. You know, there's a lot of different ways you can slice and dice the data and it sort of shows different stories. So I'll do my best this evening to answer any questions you have. But you know, some data points might not always feel true to your lived experience or mine. And that just is to say I'll do my best, but it is sort of helpful to stay broad, but still in hopefully a meaningful way. So my goals for this project going in that I think were really shared with the other cities were to discover those broad trends in the subregional housing market. Understand the dynamics in our households and demographics in terms of incomes and makeup. To gather and compile data at the level of the subregion for the purposes of policy development, which of course happens at the city level. So kind of having that framework that then informs how the individual cities act. And then really what I've wanted to come back to over and over is this consistent unified messaging for South King County cities. You know, I was just on a call today with some of the other South King County cities. And we were discussing how in certain regional rooms, other parts of the county are able to have a lot of staff representation. Because they have a lot more staff and it can be really helpful for South King County to have a more. More unified message so that when we are sort of in rooms where only one city in South County is represented. We can be telling a story that makes sense for a variety of of our cities. So obviously, you know, the household incomes across the county vary significantly. And you can see on the left, some of the more interesting high numbers in terms of the area median income or median household income rather. For these different cities. And then on the right, we have the median household incomes for the South King County cities that participated in this grant. And you know, the federal housing dollars treat all of these cities the same in terms of what level of income qualifies one for different levels of housing subsidy. And to us, that just seemed like, you know, the definition of affordable means something completely different in these different cities. So that's this is the real why, why we need a housing story that that makes sense for all of us. So the South King County region's median household income was 71,000. Compared to King County as a whole, being closer to 89,000. Now, the King County as a whole includes South County. So one thing that is a little bit frustrating throughout this whole presentation is that we wish we could compare any data point to, you know, the rest of the county besides us. Or a certain city or North King County or something like that. And you know, we couldn't afford to look at every single data point and every single comparison. So I've peppered in throughout the presentation comparisons when I can. And you know, we can always follow up to try to find out more information if we need. But just to put that out there that, you know, I would love to know how South King County's median household income compares to East King County's. But that's a data point that we don't have. So let me get into the general findings now that I've given you all the caveats. In general, Kent is really sort of drives the South King County subregion. So a lot of the data that was true for Kent was pretty well true for the subregion. And that's because we are the biggest city in the subregion. So that's just sort of helpful to know. We both Kent and the South King County's subregion have a lot of housing needs across a range of incomes and lots of different types that are needed. And you know, it's it's pretty significant and we'll you'll see when we get into that in a moment. Now Kent's recent pace of housing construction must really basically continue as it has been to keep pace with growth. We have not fallen behind. South King County as a whole really has to pick up the pace considerably. And that's partly due to the dynamics of Kent's household size and how sort of the numbers shake out. And I'll explain a little more about that in a bit. But you know, we both both Kent and South King County have seen significant growth in two person households and pretty steep declines in one person households since 2012. So I thought that was sort of interesting. Population growth has actually been twice the rate in Kent as it has been in South King County as a whole. But the actual number of households has grown by a lower rate. And that's again due to Kent's large household size. So that was a real finding that kept popping up is that Kent's household size really does skew larger. South King County incomes have gone up more than Kent's incomes. That seems to mostly reflect Renton and a little bit federal way. And then Auburn renters have also seen incomes go up a little bit outside what the sort of norm or average would be for the rest of the cities and the. And this South County. So those are just some starting off high level and none of these next few slides are going to shock you. Prices are up, I think everyone knows that. Average rent for a two bedroom in Kent has gone up 58% since 2010. Median home sales have gone up 88%, which is obviously, you know, quite striking. Incomes are up as well, but not by as much. So renter incomes are up 25% since 2012 and up 11% since 2012 for owners. So obviously, there's going to be a mismatch there and the result is this cost burdening slide. So this is just Kent, the graphs for South King County and King County as a whole actually look pretty similar though. You know, the cost burdening, which means that you're spending more than 30% of your income on on rent or household costs. And then severe cost burdening means you're spending more than 40%, I believe. So you can see the kind of levels of that, you know, it is not insignificant. And I think it's particularly interesting to see that owners in the 80% to 100% AMI category even are cost burdened. So ownership across the board and then obviously renters across the board as well. The severe cost burdening more so in those lower income brackets. So what is our income distribution by AMI? From 2012 to 2018, you can see there have been some changes. And this should track with graphs that I've shown before that were my sort of narrative versions of. Some of the data that you'll see tonight, that's a little more concrete. Household income has gone up for the 100 plus category. That is, we have more households making 100 plus AMI since 2012 to 2018. That's been an increase, slight increase as well in the 80 to 100 and all the others are decreases. Now I'm going to flip between the next slide and come back to this one a few times because there's a few important things to talk about here. But basically, when we look at all the past slides and combine them with this, our consultants were able to project forward and say. How many households will you need at various level? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, how many housing units will you need at various levels of affordability to accommodate the people who live here or are moving here? And this is the result of that. But I want to be really clear about some assumptions that were made here so that everybody's on the same page. So what this shows is that the largest percentage of the number of units that we will need is in this 100 plus category. So that means that if we need units across the board, we need the most actually at market rate or above. Then, you know, we also need a significant amount at the 50 to 80 and 0 to 30 AMI levels. And then 30 to 50 and 80 to 100, we need some, but not quite as much. Now, the reason this is really, I'm going to harp on this for a second, is that you may recall from the graphs that I've previously presented that. You know, I was looking at the income trend and saying, you know, we're going to have way more 100 plus households. And I was factoring that in when I previously described what our housing needs would be. Now, if we look back at this income distribution chart, what's important to note about the housing need in this project? Is that there were no projections forward of what those, how those incomes would change. And the reason for that is that we don't really have a lot of ability to necessarily affect who moves here and who doesn't. I mean, we have some very indirect ways we can do that. But essentially, anything the consultants chose about that would be a policy choice. So when I look at this slide about housing units needed by AMI, what I'm really looking at is as if the people who are in Kent today. And those income levels were frozen in amber and just projected forward so that in the future, 2040, we have the exact same percentage of people. And what's really critical there is that we know that the 0 to 30 AMI households are going down because they're being displaced. So we could allow them to continue being displaced and see that 0 to 30 go down. We could try to take steps to keep those folks who are making 0 to 30 within the community. We could try to take steps to build more and and get more of 0 to 30. And that's true for all of the different levels in different ways because they're not all under the same displacement pressure. But I'm bringing all that up just to say that there are policy options that would change the number of units that are needed at these different AMI levels. That, you know, I don't think there's any strong sense, at least I don't have a strong sense for like, okay, we need to be, you know, totally making sure that the exact same people who are here today. You know, have changed in this or that way in the future. It's really more of like, what do we owe the folks who are in Kent today? And what do we owe the future in terms of, you know, how people can be able to live in our community in the future? So I'm going to touch back on this concept because I know that wasn't maybe the most clear way to explain it. But I was just trying to make a distinction between the way that I used to present this information to you all, which accommodated that trend line. That the 100 plus, you know, is is going steeply up and the 0 to 30 is going steeply down. And that is not shown in this housing needs, housing units needed slide. Because that really felt like a policy choice that the consultants didn't want to make for us. So I'm going to go through some more slides and then you'll see some little, a little compass symbol that will mean like policy direction. And so we can talk about, you know, truly what is the policy direction for the city? And I have some suggestions there. So this is not a result of this South King Housing work. This is actually based on Housing Development Consortium. They created this in 2017, so this is old information. But it always, whenever we see something like the previous slide, I'm always so curious, how would this relate to the other cities? You know, how would this relate to other parts of the county? And so I just wanted to throw this up quickly. It's not recent and it's not based on actual need, it's based on county policy. But just to get a sense for how does South King County and those income levels and the housing needs at those income levels compare to other parts of the county? So as you can see, in general, the 30 to 80 is, you know, more well accommodated in South King County than in East King County and in other areas of the county. So they probably would not love me putting this graphic up because it's out of date and I didn't ask their permission. So if no one could let them know, I would appreciate it. But I just thought it was an interesting way to just get at the idea that, you know, there's going to be a different number of housing units needed by AMI. For every single city and for every part of the county. And and those also are going to change based on those policy choices as I was trying to just describe. So let me, let me try to sum up what I just said. There is not an ideal mix of incomes. And I did rack my brain and look through a lot of literature to see if there was just out of curiosity. It's really a subjective thing to say, you know, what is the right mix of incomes for a community? A mix is definitely important. I think everyone can really agree on that. A mix of incomes is important, but there is not one ideal mix that makes sense. And not only that, even if there were, we don't really have that much power over these macroeconomic trends of what's going on in the region. But as I started to touch on, there are steps cities can take that indirectly affects the mix of incomes in the community. You know, and those are related to the kinds of capital projects we build or the kinds of programming that we have. You know, if there's an amazing parks program that really attracts people of a certain income level because they, you know, there's some demographic reason for that. Like that's something that indirectly could affect the mix of incomes. But what is definitely true here is that without action, displacement of those lower incomes will continue to occur. Because people will keep looking farther and further south for affordable alternatives, given, you know, the crazy prices of the Seattle housing market. So this is my first little compass slide, the compass symbol there meaning, you know, I think we have a policy direction opportunity here to say. Is it important to the city to to mitigate, prevent, you know, whatever kind of word you want to to help with that displacement issue of those lower incomes? And, you know, I I would suggest that that's a very reasonable and responsible and fair policy direction because we have folks living here today. And, you know, what is our responsibility to them moving in the future? So I'll touch on what that policy direction might mean in a little bit. I have a few other slides that just have some good comparisons just to help flesh out the story of the housing inventory in South King County. So this, this graph is showing the sort of CoStar ratings. So CoStar is an organization I know nothing about, but they they monitor the quality of multifamily housing. This is based on a sampling, not the entire stock of the city, but it was a pretty big sample size. So it's pretty good. And essentially, the ratings consider design, amenities, landscaping, all those factors. And so you can imagine that a five star building is like the luxury end. It's got really nice finishes, really nice design, high level of specifications for its style, that kind of thing. Four star buildings are higher end and have desirable amenities. Three star buildings are sort of smaller and older with less energy efficient and controllable systems. Two star buildings have, you know, adequate windows instead of generous windows, that kind of thing. They have below average finishes. And one star buildings really, you know, are probably tear down type of buildings. They might require significant renovation or potentially just obsolete. So what we see here is that very few one or five star properties exist in the region or in King County. But you can see that, you know, Kent has quite a few in the three star range and not really as many four star as some of our neighboring cities such as Renton. Or as King County as a whole. King County as a whole, you can see at the top, there has a pretty good split between two, three and four star. So this data represents a sample of like 800 some multifamily properties throughout the six cities. And it might omit some of those smaller mom and pop managed properties, but it just gives you a sense for like, what is the quality of our building stock compared to King County?
Haley?
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, Madam President, you know, could you go back one please? I just want to make, so 22% for Kent, the 62% and the 16%. So that 22% is telling me that's the inventory?
Yeah, so of of 100% of our inventory, 22% is in this two star range that is, you know, a bit lower end. So we have over half of our multifamily properties are in the three star range, which is right in the middle. And then just a small percent of 16% are in the four star range, which is a little higher up.
What is the, I mean, there there's a perfect rating, what it should be? Should it be like 30, 40, 30 or I mean?
No, I could say this is somewhat of the incoming where there's not some ideal thing. Obviously, you don't want every single thing to be high end or low end because that doesn't give you a variety of income levels and affordability levels. I think that having a good split seems like, you know, a good goal to have. So when I see King County having 27, 36 and 34, you know, that seems like a pretty good split just from the perspective of that. We want a lot of variety. The subregion as a whole, which is, you know, pretty similar to Kent. Has, you know, much more in that three star range and a bit less in the four star range. And really, it's the same in the two star between King County and South King County. So it really just suggests that there's, you know, perhaps opportunity for some higher quality building stock to contribute to having more overall variety. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so another just point of reference here is about number of bedrooms. I was really curious about this because I've heard different things about this. So compared to the rest of King County, the subregion, and this is not surprising, has far fewer studios and more two and three bedroom units. And if you think about the fact that I mentioned earlier, we are, we've had a lot of one bedroom households move out of the community. You know, there's sort of a question about, you know, do we, you know, what are we, what are we not able to provide? But one bedroom households or one person households might be looking for because they're not finding studios, that's for sure. Not in Kent or in South King County as a whole. I was also actually surprised though by that we don't have that many larger bedroom units. I kind of thought we would have quite a few five bedroom plus just based on having such a large household size. But as you can see, we really, and like much of South King County, we all have quite a few two bedroom and three bedroom units. And we're not really doing so well at the other ends. Now that is, again, it's not exactly surprising, but it just seems like some good information as we think about the demographics of our community. Here is one way where we skewed really different from the other cities. Our multifamily units skewed dramatically towards apartments. So we only have 5% of our multifamily units as condos and 95% are apartments. And when you look at these other cities, really different numbers. They have quite a few bit more, a few more condos. So I wonder if another policy direction we could consider here is identifying barriers to condo production. I'm really curious to talk to some of other cities about those projects. Because for years, condo liability law was like the reason that everyone gave that condos weren't being built in the region. And then that law was supposedly revised and I kind of asked around and it was like, well, there's, it takes a while for that to sort of ripple through the market. But I'm curious, did those condos in these other communities get built before that law or after it? And, you know, what else could we be doing that these other communities are doing to attract more condos? And of course, the reason for that is to sort of support those goals about boosting homeownership, which at least if we were to continue that that policy direction from previous versions of Kent's comprehensive plan. That is something that the that the city was interested in. So this is another potential policy direction. We also took a look at the regulated affordable housing world. And so that means, you know, there's some active subsidy that's an ongoing situation or was, you know, was built with a large subsidy. And this is really, really hard data to get. So this is where we really got a lot for our money in terms of having consultants who were able to track things down that we couldn't. So the data is incomplete, but it does tell a sort of broad picture that I was not previously able to tell myself. So I think it is very notable and worth mentioning to other communities in the region that 20% of our apartments are regulated. That number shocked some county staff. That number shocked some county staffers who I was talking to because, I mean, you know, you all know I live in Seattle. And if twenty percent of the apartments in Seattle were regulated, I think that, um, this region would be a lot better off. We don't know what the numbers are for Seattle or those other cities. We couldn't do that research, but we feel pretty certain that most of the parts of the county do not have such a high percentage of their multifamily housing stock in, you know, uh, regulated apartments. And that's not a good or a bad thing, it, but it is quite striking. Um, and, you know, seeing, looking at the different numbers here, we're sort of middle of the pack in terms of South King County being at twenty-one point seven percent uh, compared to, you know, Auburn's is a bit higher, to Cloes is a bit higher, and then Burien, Federal Way, and Renton are a little lower. So, um, the level of affordability in those units, as you can see here, is stacked heavily towards the sixty percent AMI or below. And then if you add in that fifty percent AMI or below to that, because that's typically, we could look between thirty and thirty. I mean, it's just, it's very much on the upper end of what's considered to be affordable. Um, yeah, I think it just shows very clearly that the lower end of affordability is not well-served. It's particularly lacking. So, you know, this again could, I didn't put a little compass on here, but I think this could support another policy direction regarding like, you know, when there's affordable housing being developed, where could it, how could it really best serve the need? This information didn't actually come from the SoKyo work, but was just sort of some more research that we were doing. Um, we're curious about the relationship between the number of attached units. So that's multifamily or, you know, um, fourplexes or townhomes or that kind of thing versus detached units, uh, which are single-family homes, uh, of course. And Kent has a pretty, um, you know, even split. Uh, and, um, of course, that little sliver of most of those is mobile home, boat, RV, or van. So there's kind of other types. Um, Takua has a bit more attached housing, which is a little bit surprising to me. And Burien has a little bit more detached. But, um, generally, South King County have a relatively even split. Now, I just threw up here for fun, a couple other cities around the region just to see what that was like. And it's not surprising that Seattle has more attached units, given the size. Um, but other parts of the counties have more detached. So that's just a little, um, helpful information as we're thinking about, you know, what is our housing stock, you know, literally, what is it shaped like? What are, what is the built form of of the kinds of units that we have? And how does that compare to other cities?
Haley? Yeah, can I ask a question, Council President?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, so on this, actually, this brings up a question I've written down, wanted to ask, was when we're looking at all of this, all the statistics that were done at the subregional level and we look at renters, where do mobile homes fall in? Because we know that they rent the land, but they own the unit. So where are they, where do they fall in this study?
Right, mobile home generally, mobile home owners generally report themselves as owners because they own the unit. And so that, to me, when I see anybody, um, in the very lower end of the income spectrum who is an owner, I sort of assume that that's probably a mobile home park, uh, mobile home unit owner. Um, and and, you know, obviously, that does not represent their full housing cost kind of matrix. So, you know, I think it's one of those things where the data doesn't, doesn't break down well to be able to capture the nuances of what's going on for those people. And that's why I'm really, really looking forward to this next phase of work where we dive in deep on mobile home parks and owners and tenants and residents to try to understand what are those different dynamics? Are they all owners and do they own what they think they own? And what, how much is their rent if they're, if they're owning and renting and all that kind of stuffs? So, um, yeah, it's a good question and I think that the data is, uh, is pretty inadequate on that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, um, moving on just briefly to touch on employment. We did some work for, um, touching on employment in part, as part of the SoKyo work because it was required by the grant. But honestly, the work we did for Rally the Valley was much higher quality. So I'm actually pulling in those maps just to, just to remind you because we looked at, um, trends in SoKyo, but the numbers just weren't that meaningful. What we really discovered during Rally the Valley that I think is very relevant to this housing conversation is that we have both a concentration of employees with higher education and a concentration of employees with high school education or equivalent, meaning that our housing mix could, might, serve both of those groups who have really different ability to spend on housing based on really different wages. Um, but, you know, if we don't mind them commuting in from, to those jobs from elsewhere, contributing to traffic, you know, our housing stock doesn't have to accommodate them. You know, there's this idea of live where you work. And I think that, um, you know, as we look to the future, it just brings up the question of just passing Rally the Valley warrant to change in housing policy. Are we accommodating workers today and can we accommodate them tomorrow? It's my opinion that without policy, uh, without a policy direction that is really focused on that hundred-plus, those higher-wage earners are likely to continue looking outside of Kent city limits to meet their housing needs. And that's because, you know, if we look back at that multifamily qua, uh, building quality graph, it showed that we don't have a lot in that upper end. And, you know, our housing prices may be going up, but we may not have the kinds of housing that would really feel like what, you know, upper-level management at one of the companies in our valley would look for. And so this is an example of, you know, knowing that a lot of the jobs in the valley are not transit-accessible. You know, what are the ways that we can think sort of not just land use, but looking at, um, land use and transportation and economic development and all these pieces to say, are we providing a way for people to live close to where they work to not contribute to traffic as much? And to be able to, you know, spend their dollars here in Kent and all those good things? Or do we not have the housing that's appropriate for that? So that's what the little compass on this slide is about, is just trying to get at this idea that, um, you know, higher-wage earners that we do have a concentration of are likely to, you know, continue to, um, look further east for different kinds of housing units. So I just described a lot of things that might feel overwhelming. So let's transition into talking about what we can do about any of those things.
Nice to be up. Sorry to interrupt really quickly, but, uh, Councilmember Core has her hand up, so I don't want to get too far.
Thank you, thank you, Haley. A couple of questions. One of them is how is COVID going to impact this? And second, uh, we were talking about multifamily. How much are those high earners are looking for multifamily living? Um, you know, just as a scenario, because if if you're able to afford it, you would be looking for a single-family home because most of these people are settling in? So just kind of thinking of that, I don't know if you have information related to that?
Well, I don't have any specific information, but I do have, um, some things I can say out loud to you and you can tell me if they're compelling. I, I think that given our housing prices going up, you know, we actually, we do have a bit of single-family housing that is appropriate for those upper-income earners. I think what we don't have is is that rental housing stock. And while I understand the perspective that folks who make more may want to purchase, um, they also may not want to yard, you know, increasingly, there have, I mean, it comes and goes in waves and you bringing up COVID is a great example. COVID is certainly, you know, affecting people's housing choices, um, you know, for for the short term. I think that these things will come and go in terms of what people look for. And, you know, the market, it often lags to really, um, uh, to really catch up to what people are wanting in their housing. But that said, there has been for quite a while a lack of options for people who want to, um, you know, be able to not worry about replacing the water heater. They want to just be able to, uh, rent and, but still, you know, have a kind of, um, high-quality housing, uh, you know, the kind of high, high-quality housing that perhaps their coworkers have. So I would say that, um, you know, in terms of what people are looking for, I, I, there's no exact data about what people want. But, um, you know, what's important to me is that there's a variety both within rentals and within owner, uh, owner options. And so that means that if our housing prices continue to go up, you know, we need to figure out ways, and this is very difficult, but figure out ways to make more, um, you know, make homeownership more accessible for those in the lower incomes, but also make renting high-quality multifamily also possible for those higher incomes. So it's a little bit like a both-and situation. Um, COVID in general, you know, I think has shaken, has shaken things up so much that it's pretty hard to say, when we are looking out to twenty forty, you know, it's a little bit hard to say what, how, something that just happened in the last few months is going to affect any of this. Um, for a minute, at the beginning of COVID, it seemed like a lot of this work suddenly felt a bit irrelevant, frankly, because it was like there's more pressing things. But I think what I've really seen happen in the last few months is that housing starts have continued to be very strong throughout the country and in particular in this region, that housing demand continues to be very strong. Um, but as the economy suffers, the jobs that, in the jobs and the, and the industry sectors that are booming continue to super-attract peoples. So I don't think that, at least at this point from everything I've heard, there is no conception of the Puget Sound not continuing to grow at the rate that it's been growing. The Puget Sound continues to be a very attractive place to live for people, um, partly because it has jobs when, you know, many parts of the, uh, country are struggling more economically. So, um, you know, COVID is going to affect so many things in so many ways that are quite hard to predict. It's going to affect my ability to talk with the community about this work. So that's the one, that's the way that I've been thinking about COVID as a barrier. But in terms of the actual data or information about, you know, who's moving where, I think it's, it's really too soon to tell. And everything I've heard from around the region is that, you know, it's not changing any of the long-term projections.
Um, Councilmember Lamar, do you have another question?
I just, yeah, so I just wanted to mention that I, you know, I don't, I'd be curious if there's any way to kind of find out what that demographics is for that higher end. Because I mean, I know that, you know, I work with a lot of people in tech and, you know, they have the high incomes, but they don't want to, they don't want to own yet um, because they're still feeling sort of mobile in their career and they may be, you know, in this area for five years and then have plans to move back to Chicago or something. So, um, I don't, I'm not sure if we can make that assumption that at a certain income level, you're going to start looking to settle down into a house. But I'd be curious if there's any way or any numbers around that? Whether, you know, whether there is a tendency to rent or buy at a, at certain income levels in this area.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I think, so I've heard that question now from both and I think it is a great question. I will also say that it's so dependent too on the housing market because in other parts of the country, higher income, even if you're the type who wants to rent, you might say, well, it's a good investment, I should just buy. In this part of the country, um, you know, I can rent a much nicer apartment than I can afford to buy a condo, just on a, on a personal note, because I've been looking. And it's like, you know, I, the, the housing market is, has been so suppressed, uh, for so long in Seattle and and then has that ripple effect throughout the county that, um, the ability to buy is also, you know, sometimes just not there or not at the level that people want it to be at. So it's a good question and I will look into it. I have no idea how, but I definitely will because I'm curious as well. So thank you both for bringing that up.
Thank you, Haley. Um, I know you've got a couple more slides. Councilmember Core, do you have something else, um, what we were just talking about?
Yeah, just another note, um, I can, I, I see the point of view from both sides, but also like the way, the way from what I'm coming from is, um, it's the American dream of our immigrant communities owning a home. And so it's kind of something to keep in mind, uh, during this that, you know, how, what the data points are, um, because we are a diverse city and we want to make sure we stay a diverse city. So we're keeping those individuals in mind when making these decisions.
Absolutely, that's a great point. And, you know, I think this country has really pushed homeownership as, as that American dream for, um, for immigrants and those born here as well for really, you know, since the fifties in a really strong way. So, uh, that, that is, is very real and I appreciate you bringing it up. Okay, so if there's no further questions at the moment, um, we can move into this idea of what are we already doing? And are we doing it effectively? What other things should we be doing? And what do others think we should be doing? So let's start with a policy analysis. So we have the consultants, uh, look at five policies that were jointly determined by the six cities that we felt were most relevant to study in depth. There are other policies besides, and we will get into those, but we really did a deep dive on these, uh, on this list. And it was the result of consensus amongst the cities. And I would say that, um, you know, sort of the, the reasoning behind these was a little bit distinct for each of them. It's like whether or not we felt they had potential, whether they seemed like they weren't living up to their potential, that kind of thing. So I've ordered them on this slide in the order of, um, most effective to least effective according to this analysis. So the NFT, E, um, as you're all familiar, which we passed earlier this year, bring that program back, that was by far the most effective in terms of producing units. And the recommended approach, I am really, really pleased to say, it completely validated the way that we passed that legislation. The recommended approach through this policy analysis was that until rents are higher, we need an eight-year market rate option. And we should also pass a twelve-year option to sort of have in the back pocket. And so when I read that, I was just elated because, uh, it meant that I didn't have to come back to you tail between my legs to say, let's change how we just did NFT. So that's really good news. And it's good news also because it is the most effective thing we have. I remember, um, Councilmember Michelle, you asking me at that meeting, you know, what other tools do we have? And I was like, wow, not a ton. And that's, it truly is a unique tool. So I'm really pleased to say that the policy analysis supported the way that we passed that. ADUs can also be effective. And we were very middle of the pack in terms of the other cities, uh, in terms of the number that have been produced. I think we definitely have room to do more here. Burien has seen three times as many as we have, so I'm going to be looking at their regulations. And then Renton just passed some new regulations. They've been working very hard on trying to get more ADUs. They haven't yet quite been necessarily successful yet, it's still sort of ongoing, but we want to keep an eye on there on the effectiveness of their new program. What's interesting is that the recommendation for this was actually that Skip, the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners, um, be, play a coordinating role. So you can imagine if you wanted to build an ADU, that there would be, you know, some sort of standardization, uh, that, you know, maybe it's, it's model designs or that kind of thing. And so I think that's another interesting, um, recommendation that I wasn't quite expecting. Density bonuses have not been particularly effective because the benefit is small. Now, the cost is zero, so any benefit could be considered to be worth it. Um, but it's, the recommendation was that right sizing the exactions. So, you know, how much you're requiring of the development in terms of sidewalk frontage or that kind of thing, that seems to be more likely to affect whether development is sort of like a go or no-go. And then fee waivers, I was really interested in this because I had heard maybe that others did it and I wanted to know what was possible and what was effective. They have some really tricky trade-offs and they are more regulated by state law. Um, there's, you know, such a great number of different fees and they all have a slightly different situation. So they can significantly add up and disincentivize development, but the political and practical ability to waive them is low. So it's kind of an ongoing thing that, um, you know, I think we've had several pretty big fee revisions and initiatives come before this council over the last five years that I've been here. Uh, and so I think that's, you know, we're basically on track in terms of trying to continue to right-size our fees. The Planned Action Ordinance and Rural Impact Statement is, um, it's a really wonky thing that I think there was this idea years ago that it would be really effective at attracting development. And you can see that it's at the bottom of this list. It hasn't necessarily been, uh, that effective. The cost difference for development is pretty negligible and in Kent's case, it's actually like slightly worse. Um, the really, the recommendation here was to better track what's going on with these. And Renton has an example of how they, they track what's been sort of used up of that PAO EIS, uh, which if you don't understand the intricacies of this tool, you're not alone. It's, it's, you know, kind of an elaborate planning exercise that I think maybe seems like a better idea than it actually ended up being. So we have one on the books, uh, we'll probably be taking a look at it and figuring out, you know, what opportunities we have for making it better, particularly as it relates to parks' impact fees. Um, you know, it, right now, there's a bit of a parks fee that's a part of it because downtown doesn't, um, have maybe as much parks as, and you can tell from my tone that I'm not super in familiar territory here. But regardless, I think as, uh, parks' impact fee discussions continue, we might be looking at changing the fees that are a part of that PAO EIS. So all this to say, of these five policies, nothing strongly came out of this for Kent. But luckily, there's a long list of potential strategies that all cities were recommended to look at. And so I'm going to go through those now. So these are the deep dive. And everything else from here forward are strategies that were just recommended across the board. So I'm not putting them up here because they are necessarily relevant for Kent. And what I'll be doing with my staff, Kayleen, over the next few months is to really try to work out, um, what these strategies would mean for Kent. So the strategies fall into the four categories on the left. And they, we have this table that shows sort of what goal they achieve. Again, these three goals were identified in alignment with the grant for the entirety of South King County. So, uh, my goal is to walk you through what I see as most relevant of these for the Kent community. So these four overarching strategies are preservation and anti-displacement, affordable housing and production, middle housing, and that's typology, not income, and then TOD and urban centers. So I'm going to go through each of those with a slide. So preservation and anti-displacement. Um, the different strategies that were listed here, uh, were to have a regional revolving loan fund. That would be something administered by Skip. To monitor better, uh, when properties are, um, you know, at risk for losing their affordable subsidy, something like that, that would be most useful if paired with a revolving loan fund through Skip. So those two, in my mind personally, I've sort of written off as Angela's problem because Angela is the staffer for Skip and I have no further thoughts on them. Um, that's slightly joking. Of course, I'm happy to help out with them, but it's the kind of thing that I just don't think is really the role of the city. no further thoughts on them. Um, that's slightly joking. Of course, I'm happy to help out with them, but it's the kind of thing that I just don't think is really the role of the city. The next two are ones that really overlap with the human services world. And these are to, um, build up the community organization, um, in, in our community to build up those, those organizations' capacity. And then in addition to, um, check into with tenant protection. So this is, uh, the little chat boxes there are a symbol that I'm putting in to say, I would like to talk to the community about this. Because I think that, um, you know, first of all, there's a lot that I don't know. These are a little bit outside of my realm of expertise. And I think that it's really easy to pass, um, legislation that feels really good and looks really good on paper, but doesn't have any real enforcement and is therefore maybe not that meaningful. And so I think it's really worth the conversation with the community about, you know, what would it take for this to be a meaningful thing to pursue? Manufactured home preservation was the other, was another, um, strategy here. And I, if you all recall, I believe I spoke to you in June about our second phase of the housing action plan, that we really want to take a deep dive on our mobile home parks. We have 30 mobile home parks with 2,000 units in them. They represent like eight percent of the ownership housing stock that we have, and we just don't know enough about them. And so that little error was just to say, this is where I would like us to focus a lot in the next few months to, um, really find out as much more as we can to help with that preservation and anti-displacement policy. Cause at the moment, we really just have some basic stuff on the books. And then rental licensing and inspection program, big old check mark there because we have like, I want to call it award winning. I don't think it's technically one of the awards, but I think that it's very well respected rental housing inspection program. So those were all the strategies related to preservation and anti-displacement. At the end of this little section, I'm going to go back to what I see as the most relevant strategies and you'll see some of these again. But just to reiterate, I think there's some conversations to have in the human services world. And then there's this deep dive on manufactured homes that seem really, really promising in terms of preservation and anti-displacement strategies for the city of Kent. So under the affordable housing, oh, yes.
No, just a minute. Mar, uh, Councilmember Larmor has her hand raised. I don't want to go beyond this slide if she has a question.
Actually, it sounds like Haley might be wrapping back around. So let's continue.
Okay, perfect. Sounds good. Thank you.
So under the affordable housing, um, category of strategies, there are several funding mechanisms, which are mostly levies and REIT. And, um, you know, honestly, I don't know a ton about this. What I know about REIT is that it's set by the legislature. And I understand from some of my colleagues that we're in lockstep with our peer cities. Several people on this call might be much more familiar with this than I am, so I need to learn more. But, you know, trying to get a sense for, um, what is the possibility for those funding mechanisms is something that we'll be doing to, to flesh out our housing action plan. Another recommendation was to expand MFT when markets are stronger and when they are stronger to require affordability in every project. And I can't tell you, I look forward to the day. I really do. Because I think that what we have on the books today is exactly what we need. Verified with that, uh, with our policy analysis. And when we are getting the kind of multifamily development that other parts of the region are getting, we'll be able to require that affordability and feel like we really, um, you know, responded to the reality of, uh, you know, the combination of land prices and rents and everything, but in a way that's really, um, really, really responsible for our community's needs. And then calibrate fees and development regulations. So, you know, there's a lot of different fees. There's a million development regulations. It's really, there's a lot of specifics you could mention, but it's, you could almost never mention the whole universe of them. So, um, I consider that kind of thing to be ongoing. You know, we're constantly adjusting those things. And, you know, there's always going to be opportunities, uh, or I would like to find as many opportunities as I can to calibrate those fees and about regulations in ways that align with the city's policy direction. Um, and, but I, I have a chat bubble here that is grayed out because we did do a focus group through this work with the development community. And I'll touch on those in a moment. And they, they really expressed, um, you know, that they would like to have fewer fees and, um, fewer development regulations. It's not exactly surprising, but that's, that's what we heard. So the other chat bubble about that, um, those funding mechanisms is just my desire to ask the community about what hypothetical outcomes, you know, would be worth, um, you know, different kinds of funding and, and who is, uh, paying for that, just to get a feel for where the community is at in terms of willingness and ability, um, to pay for different outcomes. So I'll touch on that again at the end, but, um, moving on to the third strategy category, this is that middle housing typology. So again, these, they're listed on the right, the kind of ideas of different ways to get at something besides a single family home or a large apartment building. In general, we already allow these to a significant extent. And so I really liked how the consultants laid out this three steps. Enable, remove barriers and incentivize. I would say that we're really going to be working over the next year to remove barriers because we have enabled quite a few of these and we don't see a lot get developed. We're going to be identifying where we have room for improvement. You know, sometimes the market just is not there and it's really hard for us to determine why that is. But I think in general, we can look through and say, okay, this regulation is certainly going to be prohibitive based on lot sizes and that kind of thing. And we already have staff working on that. Um, I think the opportunity here with the little chat bubbles is to actually try to get a sense from the community for, you know, if your community were densifying, what would be your priorities in terms of livability to really mitigate for that increased density? Because, you know, some attached townhomes are more dense than single family homes and it has got a different feel. And I would like to, um, be really proactive about, you know, talking with the community about that. I don't think that we're at the point of incentivizing because we don't know yet what barriers there are. Um, and I think we need to identify those first, but then we can always come back and figure out, you know, what are some other ways that we can actually incentivize that development if it's still not happening. Okay, we're almost through it. So I've just got a few more slides here. The last category is actually sort of the easiest because in general, we're, we're pretty good on this category of strategies, which are related to TOD and urban centers. Encourage higher density. As you all know, we've done it. Our downtown and midway are, uh, very high densely zoned. And, um, I just don't think that there's any way to go higher than, uh, you know, what the airplanes can hit, which is what our height limit is in midway. Um, expand TOD. We obviously have some great TOD zones already, but in terms of expanding, I would see the future BRT coming to the East Hill as an opportunity to talk with the community about what are, uh, some appropriate densities or appropriate mitigating, um, quality of life type things we can think about as those areas densify. And so I would like to, um, consider steps we can do for upzoning around this future BRT stations. And I don't think that that's the same level of the upzoning as you see around high capacity transit such as light rail. It's really, it's really its own thing. And so we need to kind of figure out what that is. So that is an area of work here. But the others are really things that we've already done or are already doing, such as prioritizing affordable housing resources in TOD areas. I think of our midway MFT program, um, public-private partnerships. I think of the work that we're doing with Sound Transit to partner on, with the development community on surplus properties at the station. And then evaluating capital improvement plans. I have one in my inbox right now. So that's just something that we do all the time. Same with evaluating TOD market readiness. You know, it's, it's kind of our ongoing work to monitor that kind of thing. So nothing in this category really jumped out to me. We've really embraced what's possible here. And I think we can continue to refine our TOD expectations and capital improvement implementation as light rail gets filled and as downtown sees new projects. So I just ran through all those four categories. I want to tell you quickly about, uh, what some other folks think about these things. And then we'll wrap it up. Long range planning group is small, but my D were good to. I have Kimmy Novis from current planning. She moved over onto my staff, which I'm really excited about and will be hearing from her because she's doing a ton of work researching on some of the things I just described. Uh, but in the meantime, we, we knew we needed to get some other perspectives. So the consultants held focus groups with both for-profit and nonprofit housing developers. And their perspective was pretty clear that development is hampered by both perception and economics. Because while land prices are high, there's just not that same demand for density as in Seattle. And you guys have heard me talk about this before. Cities should consider establishing clearly articulated vision, which I thought, well, that's great because that's what this grant is for. And then of course, as I described earlier, eliminating barriers, just, you know, any developer is going to say, we wish that you would charge us less fees and have fewer regulations. And that is exactly what they said. So not surprising, but, uh, it does confirm some things that we have talked about. So this is the slide that I'm going to touch back on that, on this last, uh, on basically everything, a synthesis of a lot of what I've already described. This is what I see as the major opportunities. Focusing on displacement prevention for the most vulnerable, that's that focus on mobile home parks. Um, I, I just want to reiterate that I think that's a really ripe opportunity for some more study and some more resources. And, um, I'm really excited about the fact that this collaboration resulted in hugely cost-effective, um, product, uh, project, because essentially we met many more of the grant requirements than I even really had anticipated through this collaboration for a really, uh, good price, which means that we can really put a lot of resources with the remaining grant dollars towards this effort of learning as much as we can about mobile home park dynamics, so that we can craft really meaningful preservation policy. The next bullet is about that hundred plus AMI. And I want to be really clear here that I don't think we need to do anything else right now for 100 plus AMI because we have MFT on the books with the eight-year market rate version. I'm not advocating for any further incentivizing policies right now. What I am focused on is getting better shared understanding amongst regional players. And specifically continuing to advocate for local discretion. And what I mean by that is that, for instance, lasting that to eat, to not allow market rate at all, but to require affordability in every single project. If that had happened, it would not be the end of the world, but it really did not, um, accommodate the fact that market rate is appropriate for certain cities based on what we've learned in, eh, in this work. And so advocating for local discretion and sharing the South King County story around so that people understand. I've been having these conversations left and right, trying to get the county and others to, um, understand what the housing dynamics in South King County look like and why it is important that we retain the ability to do, you know, whatever policy, uh, directions we need to do for that hundred plus AMI. So I'm really glad to say that there's nothing more that we really need to do on that one though, because of MFT being the main tool. And then these last few are just what I touched on earlier, pursuing in the near term, these middle housing typologies that we have on the books today. How do we dial those regulations? How do we talk to the, the community about them? How do we help shape the neighborhoods? The change that happens in these neighborhoods over time and figuring out what appropriate scales of upzoning would be around BRT. And then exploring more with our human services co, uh, colleagues and coworkers, how we can do more meaningful community organization capacity building and explore tenant protections. And again, speaking with the community about those kinds of things. So this is basically my last slide. I have one more community takeaways. I would like to ask the community a variety of things in the coming months and I will be doing that through online open houses and through a survey website. I will just say right off the bat, COVID is going to make this really challenging. Um, we know that we have a lot of folks where English is not their first language. And as you just heard me speak about for the last hour, it is really difficult to talk about this without telling a whole really long story. So it's, it's by necessity not going to be a perfect exercise, but I really do want to inform and empower the community with this information. I would like to understand the desired livability priorities, like as I mentioned. Get a, I would love to do a sort of scale, like get a, like just sort of take people's temperature of what the appropriate role is for the city. When, when housing is primarily, uh, you know, in the private market, if the city requires more and more in terms of regulations and aesthetics, you know, that will make affordability worse over the long term. And so where do people feel that the city should be in terms of that? Should we be making it possible to, uh, you know, should we be making it as cheap as possible to build here? So that housing affordability is not such a difficult thing in the future. And we can't make the rents go down, but we can make them go up less fast. Um, or should we be ensuring that the quality and the design is at its absolute highest, even if that means that, you know, people's kids can't afford to buy homes here? So obviously, hopefully it's somewhere in the middle of those two. Neither of those sound quite right to me. But similar to the last bullet here of just taking the temperature on like, what outcomes do people, does the community feel are worth? What kind of pain in terms of resources or who should be paying? So these are still works in progress and I'm, I'm working really hard with, um, variety of staff throughout the city to figure out the best ways we can talk to the community. We will be doing, um, translation of the online resources. But I think there's some amount of discussion that needs to happen that I, I'm just not certain how we're going to be able to reach everyone I'd like to reach. So very open to ideas on that. Finally, I've reached the last slide. Thank you so much for going on this journey with me. I just would love to hear what jumped out at you from this presentation. What do you want to know more about? I've got the higher incomes preferences based on renting or buying as one item, but if there are others, I'm happy to look into those more. Um, what do you think we should be asking the broader Kent community? This is the best use, et cetera. You can read for yourself. Anyway, I'm going to stop talking now and take a really long drink of water. Thanks very much for your time and I'm happy to, to answer any questions.
Haley, thank you so very much. I am going to start with Councilmember Larmor.
Thank you, Council President Haley. Wonderful presentation. I know that you and I have talked a lot about this, um, you know, being involved in the affordable housing committee. Uh, but one thing I just want to like emphasize, and I think this kind of changing the dynamic and urgency right now is that renter protections. Because we know, you know, at the county level, we're hearing a lot about, uh, what do they call it? Opportunistic investment. As we go into a recession and some of these multifamily units, um, are going to perhaps be for sale. Um, if, you know, if, uh, city organizations or, uh, you know, are looking at opportunistic investment. I'm concerned that, um, you know, private industry and private development is, is as well. And we know that right now, um, you know, tenants, uh, can be, you know, can be, a building can be sold out from under them within, you can given as little as 30 days notice to move, which I'm just really concerned about the trend that's going to happen coming out of COVID and coming out of a recession. If we see a whole bunch of this type of, uh, investment happening in some of these smaller multifamily units. So, uh, for me is, I would say that, you know, right now renter protection, I think would be really critical and would be a priority.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Haley, um, what's the timeframe for you to get this done? I mean, just based on the environment that we're in today, I just want to have, I mean, you mentioned this here as well. Just how effective you can be to get the right data and all the students in the right direction from the community?
Yeah, well, um, we are needing to adopt our housing action plan by June of next year to comply with the grant requirements. And so, um, basically we're looking at doing outreach over the next few months. We have sort of a parallel, the, the mobile home park research is going to be a bit of a parallel effort, um, because we're really pouring the grant dollars into that. And I'm going to, you know, um, basically spend my time on the more broad outreach, uh, that really touches on this data. So we do have a little, a few months, you know, to kind of chew on, um, on what the best ways are forward. I think, you know, if, if there was something that was really distinct from what I've presented here in terms of the policy direction, that would be good to know now. And we could certainly talk about it more. I can also come back to council, um, if, I don't know that there's a ton of workshop slots, but there may be another. There's, there is time to have more policy direction conversations. I know this was a lot to digest. We will need to be having this document wrapped up, obviously in the spring to be able to adopt in June. You know, with every, um, with all the paperwork and, and meeting schedules and everything, you know, I think we're shooting for a draft in March and, uh, the final being done in April or May. So, um, you know, that means truly we've got, you know, four or five months to, uh, dig into things. And, um, and that could take a couple of different shapes. So depending on, on what you all want to see, um, you know, I can certainly adjust. But I think my plan is to really have a few, probably like three or four open houses, uh, online open houses over the next few months, um, between, you know, let's say October, November and March.
Yeah, this is a follow-up, Madam Chair. Um, I, I mean, there's a lot to swallow, right? You know, so I really need some time to digest it. But I think from a policy's perspective, and whatever you're saying, you mentioned something around condos, right? And then I thought I heard you mentioned something about affordable houses. We got more people coming, uh, moving to the south end. So we need to try to accommodate that. Um, is I'm hitting on a nail, what you was, some of the, you was talking about from a policy perspective?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, these are my, my main takeaways from a policy perspective is focusing on that displacement prevention for the, the mobile home parks and then continue to advocate for the 100 plus. But yes, you're, you're correct. I also did mention a few other, um, items that are sort of potential and condos was definitely one of them. So if that, um, jumped out at you, we can certainly add that into this kind of high level, like we want.
Please do that, Haley.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you.
No problem. I don't know when I cut out. Did I, did you, I'm not sure.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I guess, uh, I mean, I don't, from a policy perspective, I don't know what we can give Haley now to kind of get her going. But I think for me, I mean, I think maybe we can come back again and try to revisit this year. I mean, I just, well, there's a sense of urgency we need to give us the rest of the day. I think we could do that, but.
No, I think it's a good suggestion. I don't think that Haley, and correct me if I'm wrong, was looking for direction from us now. I think it's, this is a lot of information to take in. And if you look at that last slide where it asks for, you know, none of those takeaways and next steps, it gives us something to think about between now and the next conversation. Um, I also think, you know, that community conversation is a good piece to put into this and what that looks like. Again, who knows? But, um, kind of looking at some of these questions and taking in this information, because this was a lot of information, very high level, um, and just maybe organizing your thoughts at some point where we can have another conversation to give some feedback to Haley. Um, does that help you, Haley?
Yes, thank you. I think that, um, you know, I tried to outline what I saw as sort of like where the data points me. And so if there are any, like I said, sort of red flags or high level, like, well, wait, why isn't this in there or this shouldn't be in there? Those would be great to hear tonight, but otherwise I'm going to be sending you a very, all a very overwhelming email with a lot of more information. And you can sort of chew on it and then I'll come back. Next chance I get, basically probably it'll be later in the year towards November to just sort of discuss the, the, how it's going with the community. to just sort of discuss the how it's going with the community and, you know, see if we want to talk more in detail about some of these policy options. So if that sounds okay to everyone, I'm I'm good with that.
I think that sounds like a great plan at this point. Councilmember Fincher, do you want to add something?
Thank you, Madam President. Haley, great, great presentation. Definitely still interested in the tenant protections. Just had another conversation on that earlier today. But when you spoke about the townhomes and the condos, we have 5% of our stock. I know you said that you're going to be talking some of your cohorts to some of the other cities to see why they're so much, why they have so much more than we do. But at this point, do you have any idea why or any conjecture as to what the reasons might be?
You know, I I sort of don't. I mean, it's it's a little bit one of those things where I can sort of gesture vaguely at the market and kind of use that as as a scapegoat for, but I think honestly, Councilmember Fincher, I don't, I don't really know. It is sometimes one one-off project or, you know, a kind of rare project will come along, and it'll skew that city's numbers in a really significant way. And so it may just be that, that you know, there just so happens to have been one or another project that happened in Auburn that, you know, just really bumped things up there. But I honestly, that that was not something that our consultants highlighted for me. And so I only saw that data point more recently, so I haven't really had a chance to delve.
I am anxious to find out what you find out. Thank you.
Sure.
And Haley, I just want to make a comment that a lot of this information falls into line with information that you presented to us at our retreat and that we've seen here at workshop. So it is good to see that that information is kind of consistent with what we continue to talk about. I especially thought the employment related to housing mix slide was very interesting. So some of these new things that we're seeing again just confirms, you know, what we're seeing and what direction we're considering going. So great presentation. Thank you very much.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
Any other comments or questions before we take a quick little break? All right, I am not seeing any hands raised. So Haley, we will look for some information from you in the near future. And looking forward to talking about this again.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. We have come to the end of our workshop. Take a quick break, and we look forward to seeing everyone back here for council at seven. We are adjourned.